Call this meeting to order. Madam Treasurer, please call the roll.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Here.
Ms. Sequin?
Here.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Here.
Mr. Hauser?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to introduce our group up here. To my right is, far right is Brent Parker, board member. To my right is Elaine Sequin, she's our vice president. I'm Mike Gebhardt. To my left is Ann Karstoffen. Board meeting. To her left is Juan Hauser, board member. To his left is Superintendent Anne Schlossen. To her left is Treasurer Allee Hayhold. All right, I guess we have a presentation tonight?
We do, we do.
Maria Gilmore?
Yeah, Maria Gilmore, one of our teachers from the high school and I believe department chair for World Languages. And she does a lot of work with our English language learners over the years and does a great job, but she's going to give you a little background on the event they had this year.
We just had an event. Well, thank you for this time, for allowing me to share what we're doing. So at the high school, we have 39 English learners. And I have a slide of all the countries that are represented. We have students from Puerto Rico, Dominican Republic, Mexico, Nigeria, Ukraine, India, and Thailand. And all the languages are eight altogether. We have Thai, Russian, Ukrainian, of course, English, Spanish, Gujarati, Hindi, and Yoruba. And one of the classes that I have, my seventh period class, we do, well, it's myself, Karen Davy, and Ms. Bloomfield helps out, we have about eight languages during that period. And proficiency levels from newcomers to about an intermediate. It's a lot of fun, but it's wonderful. So our EL family night that we just celebrated, and I was remembering, I think this is our ninth one.
Yeah.
When we first started, it was a lot smaller. We have grown, the program has grown. We have an EL teacher on every campus now. And we decided, because, you know, it's about five teachers now, that we were going to do a theme, and we went with Dreamers, from pre-K to 12th grade. We read this book at the high school, Dreamers by Yuji Morales. And I took like three pages from the book that kind of gives you a picture of what the book is about. The first one, Yuji's leaving Mexico, and she packs, you can see her backpack. So I asked the students, you know, what do you see? And they were, you know, saying the heart, the dog, and I said, those, what do you think those are? And it's, you know, what they bring, what we bring is immigrants. When we leave our countries, we'll pack things that will remind us of hope. And then we looked at the second slide, and I, you know, and I asked them, notice, look at her backpack now, what do you see? It's clothes. So then I tried, because, you know, I want them to learn the language too. And we talked about the tangible and intangible things, the concrete and abstract. And I said, what do you think is in her backpack? And, you know, we talked about hope and dreams and fear, and with our ELS, the trauma that some of our ELS bring, that, you know, the ones that have lived through the war in Ukraine. And this was kind of funny though, because when I said, let's compare and contrast the pictures, again, I'm constantly throwing in academic language. And I said, what do you see in that second picture with the bats? And I'm labeling bats, because I have newcomers, you know, to intermediate proficiency, so I'm labeling bats, and I'm thinking, this is going to be a deep conversation. And it was in unison, like the students from Puerto Rico, from Thailand, Ukraine, they're all yelled, Batman. That's what I did to her. I started laughing, like, okay, yes, Batman, but what, if we look at it, it's darker. And it's, again, those fear of, you know, coming to, to a new country and having to learn the language and the culture. And then the last picture is where Yuji shares that she learned how to read and write English by going to a library. And just working hard, you know, like I tell them, work hard and you can fulfill the American dream. So I took it a step further, because I myself am an immigrant, and I don't want them, I'm originally from Nicaragua. We came to the United States escaping communism in the 80s. And I don't want them to forget their story, because that's where they're going to draw their strength from. And also their language. I tell them, they're one generation away from forgetting, you know, that language. So they have to pass it on and these stories. So I have them interview their families. So we're going to have, you know, some good family nights, interview the family. And these are the questions they ask. I just have a few of them. What did you bring with you when you left? And if you notice, there's a common theme here, they all came with just a suitcase. You know, one family said, I brought my two daughters with me. And then I rewrote the question here, because they were, they were supposed to interview the families. And they were supposed to ask their parents, what were your hopes and dreams for me? So this is, again, what a lot of the families responded, to go to college, to be professionals and fulfill every goal they have set themselves for. Good quality of life, for a better life, to be bilingual, to have jobs and be good, overcome any obstacle, have a good education, health insurance, for them to have a good and happy life. So we start seeing like these common things. And I wanted them to also, we do circles, you know, we love circles. And I started this when we did this, you know, take a step forward if you have relatives back home. And all of them, you know, took a step forward. And when we looked at these, the answers, I wanted them to see that we have more in common as human beings than we have differences. And another question that just, I mean, it just left me, you know, thinking a lot was, what was the most difficult to leave behind? 100% of our families said relatives, family. And that's, you know, their support system. So then I had them tell us, you know, their stories in one sentence, where they came from and what their hopes and dreams were. And this is mine real quick. Again, I'm a Nicaraguan immigrant who carried my parents' dreams of a better future and became a teacher. Although my father wanted me to become a doctor, I did not do it. I became a teacher, and I'm glad I did.
So are we.
Huh?
So are we.
This is one of our ELA teachers, Karen Davy, first-generation college graduate with Ecuadorian and Peruvian backgrounds, who dreams of getting my PhD in curriculum and development. And these are some of our ELS. I'm a Ukrainian who left everything to start a new chapter in life, to further grow, and my dream is to have the best life possible. Sadiel, one of our ELS who's back there. I am Sadiel, just a boy who didn't plan to move from Puerto Rico and has the dream of graduating with the highest grades possible, so that his future self doesn't have any inconvenience when studying what he wants. And one thing I wanted to point out, you know, as children, we, they didn't ask to come here. You know, the parents made that choice. I was eight when I came, I did not ask to come, but, you know, blessed that we did make it to America. This is one of my Puerto Rican students. I'm a Puerto Rican who wants to go to college to become a vet and have a better life. Our Thai, my name is Preysen from Thailand, and my dream is to work at Nvidia, a top company in the fields of AI and gaming. Again, these are more, just to get an idea. A lot of our ELS will, are first, you know, first in their families to graduate. And then this is Prachi from India. I'm Prachi, and I'm an Indian immigrant who wants to go to college and own a business. And one of our other Ukrainian students, I'm a Ukrainian young man who plays soccer and wants to go to college to be an engineer. It was hard to adapt, but we got this. We also, I had them do a backpack. I know it's, you know, it looks kind of elementary, but it gets them talking. And outside of the backpack, it was the tangible things. What five things do you remember you brought when you came to Ohio, to the United States? And inside are the intangible, you know, a hope, a hope, better life, a better future. So that's, that's basically it. One story, and if you don't mind me sharing it.
Absolutely.
That time that really, really got to me. On Halloween at the high school, we had, the fire alarm went off. And it was during my seventh period. We were outside, and one of my Ukrainian students, you know, he's a freshman but very guarded and hasn't really opened up yet. I, you know, we're, we're talking about other things, and like five minutes of standing outside, he just comes up to me and he says, Ms. Gilmore, you know, I saw people die. And I'm like, okay. And he says, not just by gunshots, but bombs. I saw five people die when the bombs fell. And I, you know, and he's telling me this, and all I could say was, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but I'm glad you're talking about this, because as we share our stories, that's when we, you know, do the healing. And a lot of times with immigrants, we don't, it's not that we don't believe in mental health, but it's not something that is stressed. I wish more research can be done to see how we, you know, we can embrace that better. But, you know, I told him, I'm glad you're, you know, you're telling me this, how do you feel? And he says, mm. And he's, you know, he's just staring at me, and he says, you know, my dad is still there. And I said, yeah, I know that, because, you know, they didn't let the men or the boys leave. And he was at the age where he should have not been allowed to leave. So, you know, and it was just silence. I mean, at that point, I didn't know what to say. I know there is, of course, we have a great support system at the high school. You know, I'm thinking in my mind, oh my gosh, I got to get him connected to the counselor. But then he's staring at me and he says, but you know, we have to look at the positive. And I got to get out. I'm, I'm, I'm here in America. I wake up every morning, and I'm just thankful that I, I made it to the United States. So it's stories like that, you know, when we see, if we go back to that picture in the, in the book here, when we see the backpack, in that second picture, we don't see what they're carrying, what our ELS are carrying. But those, those are the stories that carry them, that define them, and I don't want them to forget it. I want them to embrace it, because again, I tell them, there is hope. I'm proof that there is hope. You will, you know, yes, it's hard. It's, there are moments that it's hard, but it is, I promise you, you have more strength than peers your own age, because you've gone through experiences that they're, they can't even fathom, beginning on, you know, what some of these kids have experienced. That is basically it. If you have any questions?
I just wanted to say thank you for the wonderful presentation. It was beautiful, inspiring. Your enthusiasm and creativity is contagious. You know, keep it, along with the rest of your team, that you guys are making an impact in people's lives that will last for their lifetime. We get to be a part of that vicariously by having you a part of our team here in Alaria. And that was beautiful. Your work's really important.
Thank you.
I will say, you know, we've been here a long time together.
Oh, yes.
And you were a Spanish teacher for years, but, you know, back in the day when we, you know, we didn't have that many ELL students, and then after a few of the hurricanes, and when our population started to increase, and, and we were, I call it a gift, to get so many people from other countries to come to and see how special Alaria is. But I always appreciate the teachers, including Maria, that have embraced our students and taken them to that next level. And all you hear is, is, you know, how much they feel like they're part of a family. And that's because of, you know, Ms. Bloomfield, Karen, and Maria, and all the other yellow teachers in the district, and then also the, the other teachers that, that work with the students as well. I think that's what's special.
And, you know, we, like I said, it's a great support system. There's been days when, like Ms. Bloomfield will text me, hey, we need to check on this student, they've been, you know, she's been crying, come to find out grandma died back, back home, and they can't go back. That's another thing a lot of our ELS deal with. They don't get to say goodbye to grandparents that have passed away. Even small things like they've left their pets behind, you know, and, you know, that's, that's an experience that is traumatic, you know? And I know, again, I've experienced that. I didn't get to see any of my four grandparents, you know, pass away, because they were back in Nicaragua. So, and that's what I try to tell them, I promise you, it will get better. It will. And that's, you know, that's the hope that I try to sew into their lives, that it will, it will get better. But I tell them, but we got to get an education.
Yep.
You know, we didn't come this far not to.
Well, they're very lucky to have all of you. Thank you.
My, my wife tutored ELL, and she totally enjoyed it. She did it for five or six years. So she, one other question, that young man in the back, did you say he was in this picture?
Yes, he was.
He does, he looks a little different.
Does he?
Oh, his hair.
He doesn't have blue hair now.
He's a Ghostbuster. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much. Great presentation.
Thank you, that's awesome.
Feel free if you all, I know that our presentations are so awesome here, but you can leave if you'd like to leave. That's, there's no problems.
Now I guess we have another presentation?
Another presentation. Thank you. I don't think any of us still, I still know the important words.
Madam Treasurer?
It's all yours.
All right, thank you very much. That was a nice, warm, fulfilling presentation, so I apologize for this.
It's a hard act to follow.
This transition of school finances. Sorry, guys. All right, I'll be going over the five-year forecast, the agenda. I'll be going over the purpose of the forecast, revenues, expenses, and the bottom line. Just going over the umbrella view of the forecast, so I don't put everybody to sleep. But if anybody feels deprived and they want 25 pages of fun, it is attached to the board agenda. So please, read it. It's exciting. And then I also have a hot topic. I like to do a hot topic every time to get people excited. This one is, how are my tax dollars spent? I was going to have, what have you done for me lately? But then I thought I was going to start singing Janet Jackson. So that is my hot topic for today. All right, purpose of the forecast. I have to do it because it's a higher revised code, it's a managing tool, but what I feel is the most important is the last one, to engage the local board of education and the community with the long-range planning and financial issues. Has openness and transparency with the community and the board. So we're going to dive right into it. Start with the revenues. Revenues are forecasted to remain stable with increases in fiscal year '25 due to the implementation of the CEP program. The CEP program is the Community Eligibility Provision. The state changed their threshold this year, so a lot more school districts are joining. We joined, and what that did for us is we got an additional, like 1.25, we have approximately $2 million coming in, additional 1.25 million coming in, that's restricted, that we could spend for school lunches. So we have implemented the school lunch program, so everybody eats for free. So we'll get the money in, and then we give it right back to the lunch program. So it's a win-win for everybody. You can see, as I have in the arrows, that you could barely see, the little increase from 24 to 25, and the little increase from 25 to 26 is due to the CEP program, and then also the last phase in of the fair school funding program. So if everything remains stable, and these are my assumptions, that enrollment remains steady, and the fair school funding remains in the governor budget, that we will have stable revenues moving forward. Expenses, forecast is expenses increasing due to negotiating agreements, inflation, those are always normal things. But this year, we got hit with healthcare costs and transportation. Transportation increased. We were on an agreement before, but contract ran up, so there's always negotiating agreements. But between the transportation costs, the fuel, camp finding bus drivers, our transportation costs increased a lot. If I could focus you in on from 2020 to 2022, you could see our expenses for those years have decreased, but that is due from the COVID money that we got. So anything that was spent out of general fund, we had the COVID relief money that we could use it for, so we saved our general fund. But now COVID money is all gone. Actually, the reporting's due in a couple weeks, so there's no more Esser money. So everything is coming back to the general fund, and then you could see how our expenses are increasing moving forward. So when you put that together, our revenues are in blue, expenses are in orange, and then the yellow is the cash flow. The only reason why there are those colors is because I didn't know how to change it. But you can see when you put it together, and revenues are increasing expenses, that our cash balance will be going down. Another way to look at it is if you focus on the arrow, we have deficit spending, meaning our expenses are over our revenues. So we were at deficit spending back, we were, had this plan back in 2019 before we had COVID. COVID came and helped us, but COVID is, I don't want to say helped us, that's a terrible thing, but the money helped us. But we are back at deficit spending. So if we don't do anything, and we stay on the same route that we're staying, then in fiscal year 2029, we'll have a cash balance of 2.9 million, which this 25-page report, at the back of it, it's like 10 days of cash on hand, which won't even cover a payroll. Ideally, you would like to have around a 20% to 30% cash balance, so you have cash on hand to meet payroll and to meet the bills. Currently, we're at a 35%. Then we're at 31%, and then it keeps decreasing as it goes down. So what does this mean, when you put it all together? There's three things, three main things you could do. You could decrease expenses, you could increase revenues, or you could do a combination of all three. So we always recommend to do a combination. So the first one would be to recommend to decrease spending, which in the next couple slides I have, and that's something that we have already done and implemented, but will continuously keep doing. And then a recommendation for the conversation of starting to have for new money. The conversation should be opened up to, we're trying to get it under five mils, to go on in the spring. So that would be the conversations to start having. The board does not have to do any resolution or any action until December, ideally, January, February, you could do, but ideally, December would be an action from the board. But what have we done internally to manage our resources? So we have streamlined processes and stayed through attrition and combined positions. So we would combine positions when people retire, we would sit back, we would look, do we need to hire all these people back? Can we streamline? Can we move processes? Can we, when we implement a lot of technology, can we do this without hiring every, hiring new people back? So just this year, we have two admin positions. We realize that we don't have to fill. So they have retired, we've moved things around, and we don't have to fill the two admin positions. We refunded bonds. We did that last year. We saved the community over $1 million with the refunding of the bonds. And, is Amy Higgins here? She did an amazing job. Our director of communications applied for any and every grant she can for safety and security. Just since I've been here, she applied and received over $175,000 for safety and security. And then we also implemented the CEP, which we got more money and to then give to the students for the free lunches. Other things that we are implementing and keep implementing from Ohio Schools Council is we have their consortium pricing, the electricity, national, natural gas. We went through an electric audit, we do rebates, so we saved over a quarter of a million dollars just in the last two years, going through different programs and consortiums to find, trying to find the best price. All right, so here are my, my hot topic is how are our tax dollars being spent? So the last ask for new money was 2016, and that was the bond issue. The operating money was even way before that. With that, Alaria built five new buildings, renovated two, and added a new athletic complex, implemented new literacy programs, the creation of Pioneer Connections, increased mental health supports for students, increased safety support associates. We kept transportation at 1.2 miles, and we supported smaller class sizes. So we are trying to do everything that we can do to save money and streamline processes for the community, but also not hurt the classroom at the same, same breath. And that's all that I had.
Can I just clarify that 2016, just so, I want to make sure I get that clarified for the public, that the last operating money we asked for was 2010?
Correct.
So it's been about 15 years for that?
Yeah, the last new money was the 2016 bond. But yeah, operating was even way before that.
Okay.
Yes, and usually school districts are on a three-to-five-year cycle, so it seems amazing that Alaria hasn't asked for new operating money in that long. And of course, we're still trying to streamline and to save and to see what we can do to eliminate the cost. But at some point, revenues are stable and expenses are going up, so.
Sure.
Any questions?
Thank you, Colleen.
That's good.
Looks like we are going to have to have a levy, going to have to talk about that.
I think, just to add to that point, Mr. Gebhardt is, you know, all of the districts have the Esser, our Esser money, and you hear about this cliff that the districts are falling off of, because they use that money to stretch. And we did a really nice job of stretching that money for five years while we had it, and to, to optimize the usage. But I think that you're going to see most school districts in the same boat.
That's what that yellow line represents, and in 2026, it remained stable, and then you just got that Esser cliff, because all the monies are gone and everything else come back to the general fund. And don't forget, Board DAX has 25 pages of fun, please, if you need more detailed stuff.
15 years is a long time, though, for that money.
Yes.
So I think we've done well. Okay, do we have any visitors' comments?
No.
Item E, Board of Education. I don't think we have anything there. Meeting minutes. Could I have a motion to approve the Board of Meetings of the November 6th and November 11th meetings?
Second.
Questions, discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Ms. Sequin?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye. Motion carries. Item G, Treasurer's actions.
To accept the financial report for the month of October 2024 with all the bank statements, reconciliation, investment reports attached below, and to approve the attached list of purchase orders in order to comply with the district purchasing procedures attached below, and that is it.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve the items recommended by the treasurer as presented in item G?
Motion to approve.
Second?
The second.
Questions, discussion? Madam Treasurer, please call the roll.
Ms. Sequin?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye. Item H?
All right, to approve the five-year forecast with assumptions for Alaria City School District, which covers the fiscal year of '25 through '29.
Okay. Could I have a motion to approve the items recommended by the treasurer as presented in item H?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Thank you. Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Ms. Sequin?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye. Treasurer's report, we don't have, okay. Superintendent's actions.
Thank you. First of all, to approve the home instruction after-school program tutor as listed below. To declare the impracticality of providing transportation for the following students. And that concludes my action items.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion to approve, by the Board, to approve the items recommended by the superintendent as presented in item J?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Ms. Sequin?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye. No Superintendent other?
No, and I'll move right into personnel action items. First of all, to approve the retirement of the following certified staff. Chris Tony, she's been here for 28 years, so she'll be retiring at the end of the school year, and wish her well. She's been a great teacher. Also, to approve the unpaid leave of absence of the following certified staff as listed below. To approve the following athletic supplemental contracts as listed below. To approve the following OHSA tournament game workers as listed below. And I do want to mention that if you notice, we're having to
To approve the unpaid educational leave of absence for the following classified staff. We have a paraprofessional who's becoming a teacher. So that's always a neat thing. Also, to approve the appointment of the classified staff as listed below. And that concludes my Personnel Action Items.
Okay. Could I have a motion to approve the Personnel Action Items? Second.
Second.
Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwen?
Aye.
Ms. Kraservan?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Motion passes.
My, my report. Real quick here, I can't believe fall sports are over and winter sports are starting. I think there's a basketball game maybe this Sunday. There's a tournament out at Avon Lake and so you'll start, I think Monday is the first girls' game. So it's starting already, winter sports. Bowling started this week. So all the schedules are online if you'd like to see where they are. Also, this weekend, first of all, congratulations, they did a great play last weekend at the high school. And this weekend is Annie Junior from Eastern Heights Middle School on Friday and Saturday. And that will be held at the PAC. Also, wanted to thank you all for, for the participation in the OSBA conference. I think we, we got to see a lot of good presentations and listen to people who are doing things that, you know, maybe we want to start to try to do or things that we'd like to look into. So thank you all for going. Also, this Friday, last year was the first year they did this and I went, it was held at Avon High School. This, this year it's held in Alaria at the PAC. Friday night is at, I think seven. It's at seven. Six different districts bring a choir. Our a cappella choir is singing, but I think it's Avon Ridgeville, Avon Lake, Midview, Alaria, and I might be missing one, Amherst. And it's really neat for them all to get together, but it's a great show. The one last year at Avon was spectacular. So Friday night in our PAC, if you're not busy, please come out.
What time is that?
And that is, I believe it's seven o'clock. And if it's not seven, I'll shoot you an email tomorrow.
Okay.
But that's it and a lot, lot going on. I can't believe the end of the first semester is in a few weeks.
I can't believe it's almost Christmas.
It is almost Christmas.
Okay. Item O, Board of Education. I guess we have to approve the second reading and adoption of the following board policies, the credit cards and cash reserve balances, which we talked about last week, or last meeting. Can I have a motion?
A motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Ms. Kraservan?
Aye.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Motion carries. We do need an executive session tonight. Could I have a motion to request an executive session to discuss the sale of property and to consider matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulation or state statutes under Ohio's Revised, Revised Code, Section 121.22, with possible action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Treasurer?
Ms. Kraservan?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwen?
Aye.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mrs. Hauser?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all for coming. We'll move into executive session. What's that? Really cool.